Some questions to clarify. And the first item on agenda is a presentation of the financial analysis. The third party audit that was done by GMP consultants and I will ask our representative from GMP consultants to come on up and make your presentation and welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Council Dave Zabel with GMP consultants. And just council's aware already, city manager Gonzalez had asked the group to come in and do a third party evaluation of the general fund, report back to the city council and management. With a goal of really kind of unraveling a bit of what's occurred financially and to find the bottom, a starting point as we go into 2025. Marie Mosley, who many of may recognize as the former Kennewick City Manager, did most of the heavy lifting on this. She did the analysis on the project and she was not able to be here this evening due to a family, scheduled family vacation, but. Marie, just a little bit of background on Marie, very accomplished, public sector professional. She before the last 10 years as the Kennewick City Manager, she spent several years as the Kennewick Finance Director and then prior to that similar position at Federal Way. And so she has a very strong financial background. I have a strong budgeting background. Finances and budget are two different things. One absolutely impacts the other finances impacts budget, but finance, little bit, little bit more nuanced. This more, much more about accounting and documentation, those type of things. And so she was very helpful bringing in her in, bringing her into her fortune that she was available. And enabled it, and they were able to tap into her experience, so.
If I can interrupt you just for a second, for the record, Council Heart has arrived, so, okay, carry on, sir.
Okay, also want to make note, you know, during the process, the city managers help during the process and encouragement as well as your finance staff. Marie came here in the wake of finance, the finance director's departure. And the Assistant Finance Director was not available. So we had finance staff. Very anxious to jump in and kind of help and, and do what they could to support Marie, which was, which was super helpful. So next slide. So just a little bit of background, as I shared with you earlier, a minute ago. Considering the project, we did run into some significant difficulties, which held us up a week or two from really being able to dig in. And just to kind of give you a quick, and you can see the bullet points up there, but bank statements had not been accurately reconciled to financials since January. Which caused considerable amount of work for Marie to try to sort some of that out. Cities councils aware was operating in two different financial software, still is, I understand, one cash basis, one accrual basis and. Deputy City Manager talked to you about that at your last meeting. Documentation was really sparse and I, I don't, I don't say that to knock the finance director. Probably didn't think she was leaving, so she could have all, had it all in her head, right? But no, no real paper trail and there really wasn't, staff was very siloed, so not a lot of training of staff. So we really had to spend a lot of effort to try to piece together what had happened and, and why. The finance supervisor, as I mentioned, one, she was unavailable, but two, she was unfamiliar with the software, much of it as well, and particularly the financials. And then the current software, the cash system has been very underutilized. A lot of what's happened over here in the last few years has been done with Excel spreadsheets rather than utilizing the software. So it wasn't in the software system and didn't always tie to things the way that it should. So next slide. So tonight, we're going to go over total revenues and expenses and fund balance, which even, it's probably going to look pretty familiar to you, actually. Operating revenue and expenses, we're going to break those out and one time revenues and expenses, ARPA, the Munson property. And other funds, the dependence of other funds on the general fund and just a general discussion about sustainability, next slide, please. So this first item that I said, looks very familiar. You can see the total revenues and expenses. It includes the four million net revenue for sale of the Munson property in 2024, which as council's aware, probably is not going to happen. And if that's a one time revenue regardless, and that, that actually is the gross revenue from that sale. We don't, we, we may have a little bit of trouble and haven't had time to look into what was still owed on the property. So that's not the net proceeds from that sale, but I, I just note on here that you can see in that top revenue line where it says total revenues. Revenues have increased 65% over. The past five years, and that includes these one time revenues, including ARPA. And expenses have include, increased 89%. So you can see right there, even with all the revenues and even the one time revenues that. Expenses are outpacing revenues for, for quite some time now. Next slide. So the next slide kind of drills down a little bit more. And you can see that first section up there is operating revenues and operating expenses. Then below that are your one time revenues and expenses. So focusing on operating revenues, you can see how performance is quickly declining. So you look at reading across there, 2020, you actually had a surplus of about pretty close to $800,000 and then that shrunk in 2021. And then continues, as you can see, to go into a deficit mode into the 2022, 23, 24 years. I will make one note, you'll see 2023 on there twice, so imagine a line between the two 23s. One side's budget, the other side's actual. So the ones to the right are budget, you can see that up above. Side, the stuff to the left is actual. Again, operating revenue is up about 37%. Operating expenses, 68%. For the past four, five, past four or five years, using one time revenues to cover ongoing expenses, including ARPA dollars. In that, so next slide. So now we get into restricted and unrestricted general fund balance and just a brief discussion on unrestricted, city can spend those dollars on any legal. Expenditure out of the general fund restricted are monies the city might have put away, city council might have directed that gets put away for something. Could be bond debt service money, it could be, it's pre left one, retirement money. It's those kinds of things that are restricted and you shouldn't really tap into it. This one was pretty challenging to kind of sort through. That piece, I think we might be off a slide. Can we back up a slide? There we go. Yep, so. It was a little bit, a little challenging as upper revenues were commingled into the general fund. And from an accounting standpoint, there's not a lot, there's nothing wrong with that necessarily. It just makes it really hard to track. And that's going to be a challenge for the auditor when they look at it as well, when the time comes, but. And expenses aren't tracked super well either. And so that, that made it a little bit tough, but you can, you can see total fund balance increasing in 20 and 21 due to ARPA. You can see those big jumps in total fund balance as well as cares money. And then the rapid fall in 2023 to a projected deficit of 1.7 million in 2024. If you execute budget as, as, as planned. So you can kind of see that's not a sustainable trajectory there. Okay, next slide. So we have some, just a general financial conditions, wanted to talk a little bit about that and. And you just note the operating results continue to get worse and worse each year. The 2024 budget had a operating deficit of two point, almost 2.4 million dollars. And what was used was a one time sale of a property to, to cover that deficit. So it looked as a surplus. So if you counted on that sale of property happening, that would have, per budget would have infused $4 million. I don't know that it would have, because I think, you know, city manager and I learned that, at least from one source, that we, the city still owes some money on that property. And as I said, I don't, I don't know how much that is, I don't know what the net of that sale would be, but. Something we're kind of looking at right now, again, unraveling history is not the easiest thing because of the level of documentation. So what, what created the deficit, we, we talked quite a bit about it. Basically, your expenses have outstripped over the last five years, your revenues by a lot. Your revenues are increasing about 9% a year, organically, not taking, taking out ARPA and things like that. And your expenses have increased 15% a year. So on a general fund budget of $15 million, that's 6% difference, that's, you know, pretty close to a million bucks. So you're spending a million dollars a year more than what you're bringing in. And you're doing that every year. That's, that's kind of the trajectory and you've been living on fund balance and living on ARPA money. For those past few years. So that's, again, created a situation to where you're at now. You don't have any additional ARPA money coming in. Matter of fact, you have to spend your, whatever ARPA money you have now, you have to spend by the end of 2026. So you'll, you'll have none at that point. And so going forward, you're, you're kind of looking at a situation of. Probably a combination of increasing revenues and decreasing expenditures. And that's going to, that's going to be a pretty difficult discussion for council, for staff, for the public, because you decrease expenditures. You know, what that really means is a decreasing level of service. And it's going to be a choice of where you decrease the level of service. There's some things you can do, you know, your reliance, for instance, in the street fund of $800,000 annually. I think this year it's actually 600, but generally it's about $800,000. So there, there's some things you can look at to raise money so the street fund is a little bit more self sufficient. That money comes from taxpayers as well. It might be a break on the general fund, but it's still going to be an impact to property, or excuse me, to taxpayers. So generally, general considerations, next slide, please. Eliminate, obviously you need to eliminate the operating deficit and it's 2.4 million dollars for 2024. Next year, you have increases in salary, you have increases in chemicals, you have increases in all asphalt, all these things that impact your general fund. So that number continues to grow. You do have some organic growth where you have more houses coming in, more businesses, increased sales tax, but not, not to the level that's going to over. Overtake your expense obligations and. And zero that out, so. Generally, sustainable revenues look more like three to 4,000, excuse me, three to 4% a year. Not the nine that, that has been predicted. And it really kind of depends on two conditions. If you're, if you're a few years out and you have an economic development. Program that's taken off, for instance, the. Munson property itself is a pretty exciting economic opportunity for the city. And could lead to some real growth for your budget. But that's, that's a few years out and it's if, 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 right now, interest rates super high still for borrowing. People don't have, you know, millions and millions of dollars to buy property, sit on it and wait around. They don't have millions of dollars to start investing necessarily, so we're going to have to be a little bit creative. With that property, if we're going to try to use that as an economic driver. But interest rates basically for, for construction landings prime plus two, right? Which right now is probably eight or 9%, that's pretty expensive money. So, you know, nobody's going to line up today, but this is the time where people start planning and they start thinking about. When the money comes down in price. Timing will be right and I can move forward, so it's not a time to sit on our hands. Other, other things that you could consider. One of the things Marie had identified in here is tying any new expenditures to specific revenue. So program, you want to, do want to do a new program, tie it to a revenue. That's, that's a pretty big filter, it's one we use a lot in local government, because if folks aren't willing to pay for it. Then you can't afford it. That's simple, if they really want it, they'll pay for it and, and you can do it. It's hard to, hard to do that with police and fire and streets. That's kind of what we all think we pay our taxes for is police, fire and streets. We want to be safe, we want to be able to get around town. Then we have a number of positions funded by ARPA. They're going to need sustainable funding source in public safety and in other areas. And. I think the other, the other piece and talked to city manager, deputy city manager, a little bit about this. Is what your current allocations are, you have, you know, one, one of the things, having, as I shared before, I, I know budget. And I know how to squeeze a budget. Marie knows finance and budget, little bit of difference on both. But one of the places you always want to look is make sure that the general fund is not subsidizing some of the other funds, whether that be ambulance utility, whether that be. Water, sewer, stormwater, you want to make sure that the services, the taxpayers are funding through property taxes. Are not subsidizing those utilities, that the utilities are paying their way. So you, you need to make sure that you have the right allocation of firefighters to paramedics. The, that, that you're getting part of HR, part of payroll, those things that every fund needs to survive, because you have employees in every fund. That there, the accounting is done properly so that. Those funds are basically paying their freight. So there may be some opportunities that we did not get into that piece of it. And, and talking to your, your new staff, it doesn't sound like there's been a cost allocation plan update in quite a while. So there might, might be some opportunities there, not enough to close the entire gap. And that wasn't necessarily our. Job here to try to tell you how to solve it, happy to continue to work with the city manager and, and others on, on doing that. But at this point, I think you have some difficult questions ahead. My advice as a city manager or former city manager. Bringing this budget to balance is, actually bringing it into balance is easy. It's super easy, yeah. It's the choices that are hard, right? It's the choices that are going to be tough, finding, finding. I, I could get you a couple million bucks right now, if you're willing to pass the ordinance to implement it and deal with it. So keep an open mind as a council member, councils going forward. Staff needs to be engaging the public, because I, I think that's where your answers are going to come from. I mean, this, this is, this is an issue that. The public is already well aware of, more so now, they have a lot more facts. I will say that there was not any, we did not find evidence of any kind of misappropriation. Or theft or embezzlement or anything like that, there is nothing going on about that. Were the best choices made, maybe not, you know? I, I wasn't there, I don't know the circumstances, at the moment in time, those choices were made. You know, it's easy to look back and say, wow, we'd have done it differently. And right now, I can tell you, better note taking would have been super appreciated, but that doesn't, again, that doesn't balance your budget, but. You have a compressed timeframe ahead of you now, you're already October. And I think the fortunate part is you have a community that's already pretty engaged on finance issues. So getting them engaged isn't going to take a whole lot. Getting them engaged in the solutions and facilitating those. You know, that, that's going to be probably. The more productive way to go and recognizing that, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with community members as well. I've not shared this with any of the community members, just with staff, council needed to hear it first. And. You know, we can, we can talk about what we should have done or what should have happened or those kinds of things. And, you know, those are all super great to have a discussion about. Right now, your focus really needs to be on your budget, because you have basically three months to get it done. And that's if you decide to work on Christmas and New Year's, because you have to have it done December 31st. That's all I had, I'm happy to ask any questions.
All right, thank you, sir. Council, any questions for Mr. Zabel? Mr. Beeter.
Was there one item that really put us over the edge that we're missing?
No, not really one item, I, I just, you could just see the, it's just a, there's been a lot of spending. And it's just, the spending's been a lot more than the revenues coming in. And I, again, I will say, Yakima School District just went through this, I think Seela Schools is going through it right now. The ARPA funding really messed people's budgets up and they started living on that ARPA funding. And not really, and, and paying salaries out of it and not really realizing the impact it was going to have on them. And you, you not only started paying some salaries out of it this year, but you've been paying a lot of operating costs out of ARPA funding as well. Which is, was a legitimate use of ARPA funding. It just has inflated your operations budget so much in the last few years. Because again, I said, nobody's done anything wrong here. You know, auditor might have a few minor things to say, but nobody, nobody's done any, anything illegal or anything like that. It just probably wasn't the best, most financially prudent management of funds.
Other questions? Mr. Beeter.
How much lower are the income taxes coming in now as what we had budgeted for?
Yeah, I don't know that I can, I can answer that in terms of, we, we took, we took the 2024 budget. One of the problems we had is because of the ability to get information, we only took this to May 31st. Because things had not been reconciled, you know, with the bank, you, you have. You know, money in the, in the bank right now that has not been put in the appropriate fund through electronic fund transfers since. Deputy City Manager, when? Since May. So there's, there's funds that would come to you in the form of gas tax or state shared revenues like liquor tax, sales tax, those kinds of things that are, they're sitting in the bank, you have it. But it's not in the appropriate fund right now, so it makes it tough to take a look at it and say, where are we at to date compared to where we thought we'd be today?
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
How, how long, Debbie, how, how long can, do you need, I guess, so we can know those numbers to, to reconcile? Couple months?
It's, I mean, we are going to have a revenue hearing on, for the 2025 budget next week. So while we're putting together the 2025 budget, it's also trying to solve 2024's budget. So when we put 2025 together, we're putting it together with, with zero fund balance. So whatever revenues we're projecting, that's how much we're going to spend.
Okay.
Further questions? Well, I thank you very much for the report and the work that was done for the audience. This is the first time council is hearing and seeing this information as well. So we are actively digesting it, which is probably why there's no more questions than there are, because we need to absorb this and think about this. And so, again, thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda, since item B was scratched, would be a finance update. And as I understand, this is our deputy city manager show from this point on, and so I'll turn it over to you.
So I'm going to basically continue on where GMP left off with a brief finance update. Today's day 16, I feel like I've been here for a year, been a lot going on. I do want to first off piggyback on what Mr. Zabel said about the finance staff. I, I feel like I got the golden ticket. When I came in, I had these four finance techs that were just like, how can we help? What can we do? And by the way, here's our list of all the questions that we have, that we've been waiting for an answer for the past, you know, six months to a year. So the first week was really spent working with the finance staff, hearing all their questions, hearing all the issues that they've been having and trying to get some resolution for them. Everyone up in this front row, except for Derek, I had them all at my door waiting for questions and answers on things that they had been wanting. Information on for the past six months to a year. So it was really, the first two weeks were really just catch up for the existing staff and. And, and for me to try to figure out where, where everything was at, there's, has not been a lot of record keeping. And for instance, we, you know, I, I couldn't even find our property tax information for 2025. So I called the Yakima County, got that coming. I couldn't find the information on the ARPA county. Funds that were awarded for the flock cameras, so I got, you know, I'm working on that, I'm getting into the county system to get reporting done for that. Excuse me, and one of the other things I wanted to also talk about that Mr. Zabel had heard too, was the cost allocation plan. And in just going through our budget, we have not been doing that correctly. And so I think there is going to be some cost savings from doing that. We do have a, a meeting scheduled with FCS Group, which is one of the, they're one of the leaders in utility rate analysis and cost allocation plans. They do, they're guest writers for MRC when it comes to utility rates and cost allocation plans. So we'll get, we'll get them on board and we'll get them doing a new cost allocation plan and that should help us. Along with just, there's been a real, what's, what's been reported to me is just a real lack of leadership. And I think we're really lucky with the finance staff that we've had, because I think they've really been the ones that have been keeping everything moving, getting our invoices paid, getting payroll done. And so I'm, I'm really, like I said, I think I got the golden ticket when, when I came here with those staff. We spoke last week about Springbrook. And, and not continuing on with, you know, updating that to the new system. So one of the things that happened was, you know, we were, we had done our reconciliation and our revenue. and our revenue receipting and expenditures in, in the old Springbrook from January through May. And so for the most part, the bank recon, bank reconciliation has been done from January through May. We, we still have some missing, um, information, but we're working on getting that caught up. And then once, once we went to the, to the new Springbrook, the only receipts that were in there were, um, like cash receipts. So our state shared revenues, which, um, is our, um, all of our sales tax, um, our lodging tax, which, you know, that, that, I'll, I'll take a sidebar on this one. That, that caused a lot of problem because when I ran reports out of Springbrook, we only had $51,000 in lodging tax money. And I know there's supposed to be more.
Can you repeat that number please?
Fifty one thousand.
Fifty one thousand.
So that's what had been received in old Springbrook from January through May. Because the state shared revenues from June through September, they're in the bank. They just have not been received in our software. There was no reports to run to get any information for those. So, um, I realized that I probably needed to have emails. I needed to have the former finance director and the finance supervisor's email. So, um, uh, IT manager, um, got me those emails. I was able to go through there and find all of our state shared revenues. There's business licenses that we haven't received in, um, the ambulance, um, in fees that would come in through electronic. We haven't received those in. Um, our property taxes, oh, we did get our May or April dispersed, not we haven't received in any, um, property tax. So it just, it doesn't look like we've really taken in any of our big money since May. But staff's been working on that. We've got, um, everyone's working on that, getting, um, all of those put into place. Are, are there any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
So basically the money has been coming in.
Yes.
It's not been allocated to the proper program.
It just hasn't, it's gone to the bank because it comes by electronic transfer. It just has not been received into our financial software system. So there's, if you go to run a report, the only revenues that are going to show are ones that have been cashed that have been received at the front counter. Thank you.
So, Mr. Beeler.
Do we have some kind of a wild guess on how much money is out there that we need to account for and put back in the budget?
There's, um, it's, it's close to probably $3 million. We do receive about a hu- over a hundred. Well, maybe that's not, not 3 million. I would say probably 300,000. Cause we want, I, we get about a hundred thousand each year or each month from state shared revenues.
Thank you.
You said 600,000 possibly that's out there that's unreceived?
At 300. Did I say six?
No, you said 300.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure what I heard. So, so 300,000 is out there.
Waiting to be received.
Rated received. Okay. First I heard, I heard, I thought I heard you say six, 3 million.
Did, I did say 3.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
No, that's not right. Um, so, um, and then with the, with the LTAC, um, we had two meetings scheduled for that. And there was just with, with everything that has been going on and trying to, um, help staff and not knowing where we were with that, we just, we canceled the first meeting. And then it was like, I still don't know how much money we have. We cannot have this meeting. So, um, we canceled the second one. Um, and I think, you know, not I think, I know that we did not, um, get information out to the community on that. And so especially with the LTAC members. And I know that you had sent an email.
Yeah.
That I replied verbally to you, but yeah. So, um, so with that, um, I do have a number of items to talk with you about that will, I think, help with our revenue and/or to help, um, the community to, um, gain some trust back with the city when it comes to expenditures. Um, and one of those is, is the first item. And Jackie, that's the, the one that is number one. Now I have to find my, here we go. So by, by default, this is from the, um, the bars manual from the state auditor's office. And so just for folks, we're moving on to, um, number D. So by default, the city council is responsible for approving all claims before they're paid. Except for payroll, because we have to pay payroll. If the council chooses, it can authorize for staff to pay for expenditures prior to coming to council for approval. That's our current practice. And so, um, I would like to suggest that we go back to the default where all claims come to council before they've been paid for council's approval. Um, I do have in the packet a resolution that would, um, alter that just for, um, a couple of reasons. And one of them would be if we were to have invoices that would incur a late fee. And/or if we paid it early, we would get some kind of great discount. That those could be paid prior to council's approval. And if council cancels the last council meeting of the year, we still have to pay invoices. So it would be to, for the city manager and the administrative services director to pay the last, council meetings invoices if the meeting were to be canceled. If the meeting wasn't canceled, it would still come to council for approval. So this would be something that, um, I would be bringing forward for council's approval um, at either the next meeting or a future meeting. Are there, are there any questions about this item?
Council members, any questions about the, this item? Mr. Beeler.
I want to go back to the other item of LTAC.
Okay.
Are we covered for the, uh, Christmas parade this year?
I don't have an answer for that. When I get that answer, I will email all of.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions? Let's ask us.
The resolution you mentioned, that one's the last page attached on the first packet.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Stroster.
To motion and, and vote on this resolution if we want to enact it.
Well, it hasn't been reviewed by the city manager and it's just a draft.
Okay.
So it would, all right, the city attorney. He would need to review that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um,
All right. Thank you.
So the next item also is from the bars manual from the Office of Washington State Auditor. And it is to allow for entities to sweep interest into the general fund. And so I will go back and talk about investments for a moment. So um, the, the RCWs provide for cities to take their excess funds and invest them. We can, we can buy bonds or we can invest them in the local government investment pool that is run by, um, the state treasurer. Almost every governmental entity in the state of Washington invests their funds in the pool. It has millions and millions of dollars in it. So interest is earned on, on all of that money. Um, it is money that we have available to us daily. If, if we were to call and say, we would like to, um, uh, have a hundred thousand dollars of our investments put into our bank. It would be there by two o'clock in the afternoon. We do have $3 million in bonds. This is fund balance. This is reserves. This is not money that we're spending. When we put money into bonds, we, you, you don't get to cash the bonds. You have to wait until they mature. Um, we did have one bond that matured last week. So that money will just go into the investment pool. We're not going to buy another bond with it because we have enough money issues as it is to connect, tie up any more money. Um, so when we talk about funds, we have the general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, the street fund. Some of these funds, um, when we invest them into the pools, we, into the investment pool, the interest goes back to that fund. So if water fund has X amount of money, it has X amount of percentage. So the, you know, whatever percentage they have in the pool, that percentage of interest is going to go to, back to those individual funds. But the RCW does allow for governments to take all of that interest and move it just into the general fund. So I do have a proposal to do that. That does gain us over $200,000 in investment interest for 2024. So I would bring back a resolution authorizing the investment interest for the fiscal period of 2024 to be swept into the general fund to gain more revenue in the general fund.
Ms. Beeler.
Currently, where does that investment funds go?
It goes into the fund.
It builds up the fund.
Holds that particular, um, amount of investment.
So it's just compounding in the fund?
Right. Mm-hmm. And we don't, it's not cash that we get.
Right.
The bonds, when we have investment bonds, that interest comes in as cash and we receive that in and we can spend it. But the investments in the investment pool, everything's reinvested. But we can take all the cash out that's in there at any time that we want.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
It gives you more flexibility than, instead of waiting for the year.
Yes.
Regular bonds.
And the bonds are sometimes two to four years.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then you also mentioned with investing in the pool that if we need the, we needed the money for any reason that it can be, get taken out of that same day?
Yeah. Yes. If we call by nine o'clock in the morning, we can have it in our bank by noon.
Okay. So within the same day. That's good.
Okay. Further question?
All of our, it's our reserves.
That's your reserves. So currently the amount in there, do you know what that amount is? I'm sorry. The amount of money that's currently in the reserves right now?
I think our reserves are at 10 million. Is that what we looked at?
Right around there.
So that's, that's accumulated bonds interest?
Yes, LGIP and bonds.
Okay. 10 million.
But that's not liquid.
But it's not liquid.
Not all of it, no.
Questions? All right. Carry on.
Um, and now that I'm looking at this, we probably should have switched F and G. So the last, the last item F, um, G is to designate the local government investment pool designee. So the last time we did this, it was to, um, designate Elizabeth Alba as the, um, designate designated person to do purchasing and sales of investments through the local government investment pool. Um, so the proposal that will come forward to council is to not have a named person, but it is the administrative services director slash finance director that would be the person. That way we don't have to worry about changing that. Um, it was not changed for the last, um, um, administrative director, so, but, but we'll get that taken care of.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, it was not updated when the last finance director was here. So we were technically making withdrawals and, um, purchases outside of the authority.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would be outside of authority, that is post February, correct?
Well, after Elizabeth Alba.
Correct. She left in February. So she would have been, we, we were not in non-compliance until she was dismissed. Okay.
Nothing was, um,
Okay.
Carry on.
So the next item that I would like to bring back for council's consideration was one that, um, was brought to my attention. One of the things, the first week I was here was the number of folks that had water leaks um, that they were waiting to have an answer on. And some of them had been a number of months. Um, and some of them had some pretty high utility bills because of that. Um, we currently don't have a, um, water leak adjustment program. There are a number of other cities that do provide for that. And so what that would look like would if, um, a, a residential property had a water leak from their water meter to the house, just this one area. And they were to notify us or we were to notify them of a potential leak and they got it fixed within a specific timeframe. And that repair was verified. We would be able to credit them for that overage of up to $250. There are some stipulations as in they have to be current on their water bill and they can only have it every five years. So it's not something that they can have a water leak every year. And it has to be due to something that's was out of their control. So I do have a sample ordinance of that in the packet for folks to look at. So those are all the items that I have council for discussion. And would be happy to talk about any of them or answer any questions.
So one thing that council brought, or that was brought to council a couple of years ago. I can't remember exactly what year it was, but, um, it was a insurance program and it was offered to residents. It wasn't the city offering it, but the city kind of facilitated it being offered to residents for any kind of water leak between the meter and the house. So the city is responsible up to the meter. And then from the meter on, it is the homeowner's responsibility. And your homeowner's insurance will quite often cover a leak or something that's inside the house, but will not cover a leak that's outside. And so the city has offered that. Um, it's not the same as this and probably not as good as this, but it was a step in the right direction. And we did promote it. I haven't seen it come up in, you know, a reminder in, in the mail. Um, I know people had a lot of questions about it because it had the city logo on it and we, we authorized them to do that. But it wasn't something that the city was pushing. It was a private company that was, that was doing it. We just made it available to residents in case they wanted that. Um, I know at my place, it's a good idea because I've had some water leaks in different parts of my house. And the age of my house is, uh, it's, it's, it's starting to show, but, um, yeah, that's, it was one step that council had taken in the past. Um, something like this was not brought forward as I recall. Do you, is anybody, Mr. Beeler or Ms. Ripley, Ms. Hart? I don't remember anything else being brought forward, but except for that. But so this is, this is something that I, I like the look of. So questions, counsel? Ms. Beeler.
I had a friend that was renting a house downtown, uh, right on Edison. And the water line broke coming into the house and flooded their basement. So that would not qualify because it's inside the house?
That is correct. It would not qualify.
That's where that insurance.
Yeah. Well, and that insurance stocks at the house. Other questions, comments? Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah. So just reading this briefly on number three, just a public work, workers directors verification. So it looks like they'll be verifying that the leak was fixed. And also saw on C or B that they have to fix it within seven days.
Correct.
So then we, we would have someone available to verify within those seven days. Okay. Thank you.
And I did, I did discuss this with the water crew and they were, um, a hundred percent in support of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Beeler.
When you talked to the water crew, did you by any chance ask them how often this happens in a year?
We did, and it was like maybe 10 times a year. It's not a lot, but when it does happen to you, it's a
It's a lot. Usually they're at least a one inch line.
No, and it is, it is traumatic when that sort of thing happens to somebody having worked in, uh, water damage remediation a little bit in the past. It's a, it's a tremendous impact on the homeowner and the property owner families. Um, it's just, yeah, we want to make sure then do the best to help if we can. Further questions or comments? All right. Well, we've got a lot to digest here. Um, some of this is disappointing to see that this happens. Some of this, um, disappointing to see that this happens. Some of this um, perhaps not surprising, but I think mostly it's something to digest and it's going to take us some time to read through it, study it. I thank you for the work that you've done thus far. I do understand when you say it feels like you've been here a year, you've accomplished a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. And I commend you for that. That, that was some good work. And it is good to be updated on our finances because we haven't received a lot of updates on our finances in the last little while. So it's been, it, it's good to see this. It's good to get this and now we have to catch up from, well, most of the year. So it's going to take, it's going to take some reading and studying of all this to come to complete understanding. So thank you for that report. And uh, as we go forward now, looking for ways to solve this year's budget, but also projecting into next year's budget, we do have a challenge ahead of us. And you know, we are not alone in the world. I was listening to the news and hearing what is coming forth for Yakima in the next couple of years. Um, they too are facing some, some interesting decisions. So it's unfortunately, there's a lot more of us in this situation than, than we would like to see. So. All right. City manager would like to make an introduction at this point. So Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a new staff member, Derek Bratton, who's uh, going to be our Economic Development Director. So uh, excited to introduce him. I was able to convince him to come from Franklin County uh, where we work together and he did tremendous things there. He's got a long history in economic development. Uh, Airway Heights were during some of their boom years, uh, he was involved there and uh, spent six years at Franklin County. So uh, he's got a diverse background. Went to law school, but decided um, you know, that wasn't for him and became a planner and he's an excellent one and and uh, with deep roots in economic development. So we're happy to have him and uh, obviously he needs to generate some revenue for us so we can close some of the gaps. But I've given him an opportunity to introduce himself and, and uh, say hi to the council.
Mr. Bratton.
Okay. Some of these you gotta hold, some of them you don't. Um, thank you. And I, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here in Sunnyside. Spent 11 years at um, Airway Heights. And when I started, the unincarcerated population was 2,500. When I left, it was over 8,000. Um, it quadrupled just about. Then I moved to, and at the time it was one of the fastest growing communities in the state. Then I moved to Franklin County to work for them, fastest growing community, county in the state and the fifth fastest growing county in the nation. So I can handle growth. Um, I also can help find ways to increase opportunities and I feel that's, that's my primary mission. Um, big part of, you know, I started on Tuesday last week, um, just kind of getting my head wrapped around things and, and moving forward. I will be spending a lot of time going through the codes. We will be working on the update to the comprehensive plan. That's already in process with HLA. Um, but it's very preliminary at this point. That's our founding document for me, at least as far as my department goes. Um, and it covers a lot of the issues, or at least we'll do an analysis and give us more information regarding what our opportunities and issues are or ways that we can plan. Planning, I'm a planner, so I'm a little, you know, um, I, 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 I tend to appreciate plans, I guess. Um, plans help us understand where we're going and keep us on task. They also help us um, develop the ability to handle turnover. Because it's not the individual doing the thing. It's the individual fulfilling the plan that we've all come to a conclusion that we want to do. I feel my job is to fulfill the will of the community, not to interject my will on it. I do not, so I'm very collaborative. Now, my process and my methodology is probably the hardest, most time intensive. But it ends up with the results that we really need. I will sit here and if nobody engages with me, generate ideas. But those are my ideas and I'm just one person. There's 17,000 people here. There's a lot of ideas out there and there's a lot of opportunities and low hanging fruit. And that's where I'm going to be starting. I will be focusing on, on things like that. Um, I'm looking at with code enforcement, potentially um, implementing a new concept, what's known as community code enforcement, which is more focused on calling, addressing issues as opposed to punishing people with regard to it. Now, obviously if a person isn't, is just being a jerk, that's a different path and it'll be the continuance. But most code enforcement, not most, but quite, no, I'd say most, is due to ignorance. Meaning they don't know the rules and that they're violating it or an inability to comply. And no matter how much we find them, they still won't be able to comply. And those compliance issues often have to do with income or physical ability. So under community code enforcement process, what you would do is you utilize your code enforcement officers to address or find the problems. But then we put together a body of agencies, groups and organizations that have an interest in serving the community. And you align these people up with the needs that they have, whether it's community services, whether it's, I need somebody to mow my lawn. And, and it's not a pass, it's a free pass or anything like that. But we work with the people because what we want, especially with code enforcement, is compliance. And if we can get others that have it as best as interest. So that's one program. Um, very soon I'll be beating the streets, going in, introducing myself because my, we have a part where the Sunnyside does a good job with recruitment and of new business and stuff like that. But often what's missed is what they call retention and expansion. Going out, talking to the business owner, what do you need? How are things going? How can we help? Now I can't promise that we're going to be able to help them at all. But until I have an understanding of what their issues and needs are, I don't know. So I go out and I talk to them and find out. Cause the best salespeople for the city of Sunnyside are the businesses in Sunnyside. When they're going off to the conventions, they're doing whatever they're doing, where they're hanging out with the other people in their like industries, they're going to be sitting there going, hey, I'm getting ready to expand. What do you think? Where are you at? Oh, Sunnyside. You need to come to Sunnyside because the government here and the people here want you to be here and work with you and help you. And all our revenue right now comes from, or I mean, you know, our business from the people we are, are here. But too often communities will, thanks you're here. Next, you can't do that. Go back, keep in touch with them and work them. So that's kind of my philosophy for at least as far as expansion and retention. Working with people to help them, put them in place with business opportunities, programming, grants. I do this every day. They're trying to run their business. They don't have time to be thinking of new. And plus, I don't know if you guys have ever tried to find an SBA grant, Small Business Administration. There's a million on there and just weeding out what would be applicable. So it's those types of things. At the same time, updating the codes, reviewing the codes, working on that comp plan, doing what we can and maximizing and leveraging opportunities. For example, as part of the comp plan, there's an economic development section of the comp plan. You can have that as a real dry bone basics. Or you can use those funds to help flush out an image or a vision that we have. But I don't make these decisions. I work with the public. I want to go out and find out with the public because the idea is to make Sunnyside what Sunnyside wants. And I feel like that's my job to do what I can to help bring your guys' vision to reality. I am a completely open office. I meet with everyone. Um, I, people come in. Right now I don't have a lot of answers, but at least I go out there and I've been able to help a couple of people actually. But um, as I get the systems under control and I learn more about this, um, and I'll be doing some rework within my department and hours and stuff like that. But my process is to observe. Um, they've been doing their job for a while. Sunnyside is here, which means they know how to do their jobs. My job is to see whether or not I can bring in efficiencies or improvements and to provide them with the resources they need to do their jobs. Because they're the ones that do the real work. So I am happy to answer any questions. I will yammer. I like to talk.
Thank you, sir. And welcome to Sunnyside. Out on council members, you have any questions or comments for Mr. Bratton, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Last week I was at the, at City Hall about 9:30 and I tried to use that side of the building. I was going to go to IT. There was a sign up there that due to shortage of staff, you know, the hours were off. But when are, are we good on staff or do we have?
I need, I, there's, there's a, um, I've only got two people. And one of them's out doing inspections. Um, so my understanding there potentially um, some positions there, but um, at this point, no, I don't. So um, now I don't take lunch, but that has nothing to do with this. I just don't. I just tends, tend to work through lunch. So I'm in, then, you know, now, like starting this week, I don't lock the door at noon. Um, but, but the sign's up because occasionally it's, yeah, we don't have anybody there. If I'm at a meeting, my guy's out and then um, Debbie's out, you know, for whatever reason, then there's nobody in the office. Um, so that's an issue. Uh, my understanding though is community is kind of used to it, but I don't think it's necessarily the best. I mean, just because you're used to it, doesn't mean that's the way we should be running. So um, but I will work with what I have to do what I need to do. Um, so.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Foster.
Um, Vic, that was so very nice to meet you. Welcome to Sunnyside. Um, so question, I, I remember our previous um, economic director uh, would mention in conversation how hard it was to make time to write out for grants. And I know um, our city manager is um, aiming to go to Olympia and do some lobbying uh, come the new year to bring in more funds to our community.
Mm hmm.
Um, what's your experience, if I may ask, with, with, with grant writing? Um, what's your outlook on it? I also saw the report and, and read that you're taking over some of the work from HLA since you've began. Um, and I'm just curious to, to get some more insight.
Grants. There are millions and millions, potentially even billions of dollars every year that just sit there. Because people don't go for it. The money is allocated, it's there. The trick is finding it. And like I said earlier, if you, if you tried to do a gone to gov grants or I think that's what it's called. Um, it's just, and if you don't know kind of what you're looking for. So a big part of grants is understanding what they're asking for and tailoring your ask to that thing. But often, okay, let, prime example, a lot of communities have built recreation centers using FEMA emergency funds. Because they designate the community center as an emergency shelter. Which then allows them to get the FEMA funding. But you don't use it for an emergency when it's an emergency. So what's it do the rest of the year? It's used as a community center. So it's things like that, figuring out how to frame your grant application to meet the thing. Obviously you got to be somewhere within the framework, you know, I'm not going to be able to get a grant for economic development applying for, I don't know. You do, you know what I'm saying. It's got to be kind of in the same genre or, or, or connection or a way to create a nexus. But that's a big part of grant writing and time. But there are new resources out there that assist you in eliminating that time crunch. AI, software, it will produce about 70 to 90% of the language that you need like that. You still got to go through it and worry because it's going to mess up and it's going to do some weird things sometimes or interpret what you're saying wrong. But the point is, 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 is grants are viable and they should be utilized. But grants generally are only short-term revenue, one time. Um, at best five years. Sometimes like, for example, sometimes you can get funding for say law enforcement. They'll pay for the training. They'll pay for the, say like the first two years. You're required to keep that person on for another two years. And then after that, you know, you can let them go if you want, but you know, it's these types of dynamics associated with grants. They're, they're, they're a additive, but you can't rely on them, um, in my opinion. Um, they're almost to me, um, you want to have the core budget like, and then the grants to do these types of projects, one-off situations. Um, now the common issue is, oh yeah, we got this grant to build this thing. Great. You have the revenue to maintain and operate that facility after the grant funds. So those are things that you have to look at when we're going for the grants and not be necessarily wowed all the time by the shiny things of the, ooh, we can build this big thing. Yeah, but if we can't maintain it, that's worse than never having it in the first place.
Follow-up question. So do you uh, foresee us writing into the same issue that we were running before where we are understaffed? And there are many opportunities out there, but we don't have the FTE to be able to take on that work.
That's a perpetual issue with all, all communities, I would say. There's always those circumstances that arise where that's going to be the case and that's why we have to analyze it each time. It's, 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 it's always potentially out there.
Yeah, it's a challenge. There's, there's no question. And I, I think all jurisdictions are facing that issue of what's the balance of staff for, to provide the services versus what our revenues are bringing in? I mean, in regards to grant writers, it's, it's been sort of this mystery and, and cities. Why would, most cities can't hire of our size, you know, a, a grant writer that's sustainable. Some of the larger cities like Seattle will have their own grant writers because there's many departments with, with boatloads of money. Um, so in my experience, working at Pasco in Franklin County, uh, we hired uh, grant writers with expertise in whatever field that we were going for. So I've got relationships like that with individuals I've worked with. That is probably our most cost-effective way to go um, across about getting grants. Cause we can work with people like Raquel Crowley, who's providing us the information, then it's up to us to, to sift through those that we go through. I mean, one thing I've been thinking about in terms of lobbying, um, at Franklin County, I was fortunate to have a full-time lobbying firm, but it was an expense. Um, the, one thing I've thought is to reach out to those individuals and see if they would give me a short-term contract to have some boots on the ground. In Olympia, maybe at the, if I can beg them to have a discount rate and then if I can get it through our deputy city manager. So I'm going to try to pull some strings on that one. But so it, what, what I found in my experience is it, it definitely is a team effort and, you know, but it also takes some, some buy-in and effort from, from city council members because you need to be on the ground as well in Olympia to lobby because there, there's nothing more powerful than an elected official showing up um, to Olympia and saying, look, you know, we, we've put in some, some requests for funding, for example, the community center. And um, you know, with those relationships that you've built with those individual folks. And right now it's, we're going through a, an election season. So it'll be interesting to see how things shake out and, and hopefully the folks that win are the ones that we have the best relationships with, right? Regardless of affiliation. Um, that's where I throw affiliation out the window. It's really about the relationships that we build with individuals and the trust that we have. So it's definitely, it's one of those complicated answers that I wish it, it was just one thing, you know, we look for a grant and then we go for it. Cause I've, I've applied for grants. I'm like, I thought I had it. And then they give it to somebody else. You're like, we're perfect for that grant. And um, it was well-written and you battled for it. You lobbied, people came on the ground. Um, I remember there was a, a case at, at Pasco for the Pasco Specialty Kitchen. We had this grant. Um, and they gave it to somebody else. But we've won grants that I thought, how did we win that one? You know, so it's, it's one of those things. I, I wish there was a perfect answer to it, but um, but there isn't, but it definitely takes effort and it, you definitely have to be intentional. But um, I think the best route for us economically is, is to find those individuals that can work on a contract basis. You know, really identify the grants and you know, what, what will work for our community.
Uh, a lot of grant writers of the, of the type that he's referring to, um, is that basically they don't get you the grant, they don't get paid. And, and that's the first thing. When you're looking for a grant writer, a lot of them have that. And if they don't, you know, I mean, it's up to you, but that's, that's a way to, to play it because they'll do the work and they're basically committing because that's how they're going to get paid. So they're going to do their top job. They get a percentage of your grant. You got to calculate that in and stuff like that, but it's, there, there's a. They get a percentage of your grant. You gotta calculate that in and stuff like that, but it's, there, there's a lot of different ways to play that one. Potentially, so grants will not. Grants can supplement. They can't, in my opinion, they should not be counted on unless somehow you get some perpetual grant that I've never heard of.
All right, lots of good information there. So I have enjoyed listening to you all. Uh, what we've, what we've seen is we've brought in. Some new staff and coming in with new perspectives and new vision and seeing things that. That we hadn't seen or needed to be brought up that weren't brought up previously. So I appreciate again the efforts, sir. I want to welcome you aboard. It's, uh, exciting to have you here. Um, I believe your position is one of extreme importance. If we're going to move forward and seize the opportunities that are before us here in Sunnyside, we need someone like you with your experience. So I look forward to seeing what you're able to bring to the table, sir.
Just one more thing is I, you asked me a question, you better be ready, yeah, ready for the answer. Because I will tell it. Um, I'm a straight shooter. If I say it. There ain't nothing else behind it. It's just whatever it is, so.
I count on that, sir, so.
Yeah.
We'll appreciate that. All right, so the last item on the agenda is a time for public comment. I don't have a sign-up sheet for this evening. But, um, I do ask that, um, you come up in an orderly fashion and state your name, city of residence, and then you'll have three minutes. Please remember, council members don't necessarily respond, but we do take notes. And if it is something that needs to get a response to you, I will ask a staff member. I was corrected on that because I'm not as good at responding as I should be. A staff member will. If, when they have the answer, reach out to you and give you further information. And they'll probably be able to give you better information than I will. They're professionals at this. And so, all right, so we have a first, a person who's willing to step up first and. All right, again, state your name, city of residence, and take your three minutes.
My name's David Swales. Um, I own Valley Auto Parts at two O one North Sixth Street. About three blocks from here, across the street from Ace Hardware. Um, I want to start by saying I respect and appreciate our law enforcement and everything that they do and what they have to go through. Uh, but we've got a crime epidemic in Sunnyside and the valley. We've been infiltrated by a gang of thieves, drug dealers. And like I said, I'm only three blocks away from the police station, but I feel like I'm one of the hardest hit businesses. And it's because my store is at the center of these motels that are harboring these criminals. And all over town, we see people walking around or riding bikes, wearing hoodies and masks. And it's not for their fear of COVID, it's because they want to hide their identities. And this is what I'm going through, and you'll see in the pictures that I've passed out, um. It's happening to me on a regular basis. I continue to have my fuel tanks drilled in my delivery vehicles. Um, in fact, there's a receipt there from just two months ago where one of them was drilled. Typically, we just plug them and patch them. This time it cost me five hundred and sixty-six dollars to replace the fuel tank. That's not the first time. Um, they shoot out the windows of my delivery vehicles, break the steering columns, try to steal them, bust the ignitions. That's not a cheap fix. They steal the catalytic converters, they cut them off. Um, none of these are cheap repairs. And then just last week, I had the storefront windows of my business shot out with slingshot and ball bearings. And they stole about three thousand dollars in tools and chemicals. The repair bill for the windows, about twenty-five hundred dollars. It's difficult enough to keep inventory in my store. Due to the economy and cost of goods, but when I have to waste my cash flow for this kind of nonsense. It makes it hard for me to replenish my inventory the way I should be able to. If I don't have sales, then the city gets no taxes from my business. And I can't afford to continue doing business in Sunnyside because of what's happening. It is just too much, so I'm looking at relocating my business to another town. And I don't want to do that, but I can't afford it. And I can't claim it on my insurance because it's just gonna jack up my rates. So I just continue to eat it and eat it and eat it and. I'm not gonna keep doing that. I can't afford it. So, um, if we can't figure out a way to take care of this. I don't see our local businesses arriving. I know I'm not the only one going through it. And I don't want to keep coming to council meetings and complaining and be the. Complainer all the time, but we gotta figure out a way to stop the crime. And I can't do any, I got picture of these people doing the crime, but they're wearing hoodies and masks. And hanging out in front of my store for two hours after they break my window. My fault, my glass break sensors batteries were low, so that didn't set the alarm off, but they hung out. So I moved my vehicles in front of my store, so hopefully they're more visible, so they don't get drilled. But then they're hiding between my building and my vehicles so that they can steal my product after breaking the window. So hopefully I don't get in trouble with the city at this point because now I'm parking them on the city street in front of my building. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, everyone. Britain Moore, Sunnyside. I'm gonna follow up with what Dave had to say. Um, his story is, he's not alone in this. Um, TJ's Refrigeration. Um, we've had four smash and grabs. All of our vehicle windows were broken out of and all the tools have been stolen. We had a, a actual car stolen in the middle of the day out front of our shop. We've had the cameras stolen outside of our building, three catalytic converters. Two box trucks were broken into and the fuel tanks were drilled through for the diesel, so those had to be replaced. Um, when you have a van or all of your vans out of service because they have to go in and have the windows replaced. And the tools are gone, you're out of business. You can no longer go to those six to eight calls that you were set up for that day. You have to reschedule them for the following week and you've lost all that revenue and you still have to pay your guys. He's talking about insurance. You can't claim it on your insurance anymore. At least we couldn't. They said if you claim it, we're gonna have to drop you. So we're talking out of pocket over twenty-five thousand dollars. It's devastating and it, it can't, can't go on. We have to take care of our officers, they take care of us. We have to make sure that we have enough officers patrolling. We have to have enough people out there. They're everywhere. They're, they're, these people are organized. And yes, they are living in those hotels and we've got to take care of that. Um, so I'm sorry that that happened to Dave. I, I'm, I'm with you on it. It's very expensive. Um, second thing, I'm so angry I could spit nails. New council, thank you for being here. Your job is hard. I'm glad you're here. Old council, you were duped. We all were. We were lied to. Cronyism is one reason why we're here. Ms. Warner should have never been hired. She was the past city manager's friend. She was not qualified. It's not legal to say people's names. It's not illegal.
You are correct.
So cronyism is one, is one reason why we're here. Spending like a drunken sailor is another reason we're here. I have been shouting from the rooftop for two flipping years. This is ridiculous. Thank you for your hard work, but I am pissed. I am going to ask council to consider. In the future. When things have cleared to do a forensic audit. You don't just get stupid and start spending money. There's more to this. I'm asking you to consider a forensic audit when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Teresa Hancock, Sunnyside. Um, what Britain said and Dan said is very true. I've had people complain to me about. The vagrants and, and different things happening. Um. I do want to say thank you to you four because it is obvious that you were on to something. When you voted to replace the former city manager. I want to thank all of you for bringing on Mr. Gonzalez and Debbie Zabel and Derek. Um, I think I see good things for the city of Sunnyside. But I also think Dean and Julia and even Marty owe the rest of council for what you said when, when, um. The former city manager was fired. You came out very strongly in her favor. And people had been coming to you to talk to you about what was going on in the city and, and nothing was done about it. And matter of fact, you guys have obstructed, I think, the other four city man, council members on this. And I just want to say, I am here for the city of Sunnyside. I'm very glad for the, what's going on. I think we have the best crew that we have probably had in the history of the city of Sunnyside. Thirteen years I spent on council. I have more confidence in this administration than I do in any administration we've had. So I think things are going forward. Um, I, uh, again, want to applaud the four city council members that, um. Had the guts when it was very difficult, gonna be in the headlines in the newspaper, that they, um, uh. Eliminated what appears to have been a problem. So I, I just want to say thank you to you four. And Marty, I, I know that if you knew now then what you know now, you would have voted also to eliminate. The former city manager. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Jim Stevens, uh, we, uh, from Sunnyside. And, uh, we have a business, Stevens Health Alliance here. I think this is our fiftieth year of being in business here in Sunnyside. And I've seen a considerable amount of transformation during that time. This used to be the town that, uh, was quintessential in American graffiti and these other. All-American towns that we used to see and it's, it's not that anymore. And I think the testimony of, uh, both, uh, Dave and Britain. Uh, are absolutely. Uh, reminiscent of what has taken place here. And so I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. Derek, so Derek's made some good points here. Uh, we need to sell the community. Well, we are selling it. We're giving it away. And, uh, we're selling it out the door, so it's happening right now. And loses somebody like Dave, is, is one of the great businesses in our community. Is a real con- contributor to our community and so is Britain. And these people are being robbed to the point that they can't do business properly. This is criminal. I mean. It is in many, many ways. And I, when I heard these things, I say, you know, we're at war. It's us against them. And that is exactly what it is if you're gonna try and run a business here. And so, as Derek said, if we're going to have our community be appealing, we're gonna have to do something about these things. I think we have, as he also said, I think we have a lot of community members that will help out. You can't do it by yourself. The police can't do it by themselves. We have a group I watch that helped really, uh, dissipate. Uh, uh, the lawlessness that was going on here in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And it's, it's here to help the community, everybody, in every single neighborhood. And the neighborhood that I live in is not struck nearly as hard as the ones that are in the neighborhood where, uh, my business is. And I see it all the time. And people are intimidated. They don't want to do things. They're afraid to do things. There's. The cartels are here. Uh, we need to stand together as a community. And I, uh, to Teresa's comments, uh, we really stand behind you, council members. You're doing a great job. Uh, I had a meeting with Mike. I'm incredibly impressed with him. And, uh, chief is almost, I think now the chief has somebody that will empower him. And as a council, it's, it's your duty to empower these folks. So they can get out there and do the job that, that has been talked about. And I know that personally, I'm willing to help out. Uh, for whatever we can do. So anyway, high five and, uh, we have a good future to look at down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. See, nobody rushing up to the microphone for public comments, so thank you all for your public comments. And there being no further business to come before us this evening. Yes, ma'am.
We have one online that would like to give a comment.
Okay.
Um, first name is Monica.
Okay. Monica, you're up for public comment. Can you hear us?
She, she was having problems connecting, but she said she's gonna call in. If she can't connect.
We'll give her a little bit of time.
Mayor, if I may, and while we're got these technical difficulties, I, I'd just like to thank Dave Zabel and. And G M P for their hard work and also I know Marie Mosley couldn't be here, but. She did a lot of yeoman's work and, you know, it took her quite a bit of time. And, and also Debbie. Uh, Zabel has been just working tremendously hard to, uh, to get to this point, so I am. Just so grateful, you know, Debbie's on board and, and Dave worked hard and. And, uh, G M P, you know, that really was me initially reaching out to them that really started to uncover. You know, just everything and where we're at today. So I, I feel really fortunate. And I do echo the sentiments of the public. Um, you know, we're gonna continue to work hard and. And, um, do the right thing for the residents of this community and, and continue to work hard on behalf of the city council. Because I, I do believe we have a great city council and that wants the best for the community. So. Again, thank you and, you know, thank you to the citizens because I, they wouldn't be here if they didn't care. So I mean, I, I greatly appreciate the input. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is Monica able to get on?
Monica, are you here? She is on here. She just can't connect to audio.
Shoot.
It takes a few seconds sometimes.
Sometimes it does, yeah. We'll give her a moment.
Oh, I believe that's.
Maybe something.
I'm. Oh, I'm here, if you could hear me, Jackie.
Perfect, go ahead, Monica.
Oh, gosh, I didn't know I was on. Thank you so much. Um, and thank you for giving me this time. So. Um, I didn't get to hear, um, all of it. I only got bits and parts, but, so, um. We are at this point of knowledge and able to be moving forward because of four. Um, four members of this council, and I want to use my time to acknowledge and thank them. They have done this work in just ten months. Ten months. Some of you sitting at this council have been involved eleven to eight years. And yes, I said years. And you could not, did not want to acknowledge the direction of where our city was going. You instead chose to defend the past leadership and you defended the spending. So I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but George Galvane, Karen Vasquez, Vicky Frostall and Vicky Ripley. Thank you. Thank you ever so much. To George, Karen and Vicky, thank you for running the position, running for the position and taking the training to learn how to do it right. You have sat in those seats with dedication and responsibility to our community. You did not treat it as a stage or the actions taken and how the citizens being treated would be based on personal preference. Vicky Ripley, thank you for listening and wanting to know more and for trusting your new fellow council members and asking questions. I can't even imagine the lessons you have learned in government and in people. Now, these four council members, three of them by default should have the least amount of knowledge and understanding. But as we found, they were the most informed and supported the education of their fellow council. They were the ones that cared and took action to make us all better. If it wasn't for the four of you, we would not be having this discussion at all. There wouldn't even be acknowledgement that there were issues and definitely no respect to those of us asking questions. And yes, I'm, I'm still a little angry. I'm angry at how I was treated, how we were looked upon by council. It was more than just wrong. It was selfish. Selfish that your only thoughts were how you, how you were viewed instead of caring how our city was going to, um, manage fiscally and morally. So because of you four, we have a new city manager that serves for the city rather than themselves and their friends. Thank you, Mike. It has been a pleasure meeting you and your staff. We now have the staff that are actually educated in their positions that can and want to acknowledge us. They address our questions instead of talking around them and they don't cover the answer with a half-truth. We are now acknowledged and communicated with the transparency and honesty we all deserve. This happened because these four council members knew what was right. And most importantly. They knew that there were laws to be followed. Those are the characteristics that a council member and a leader should have. Now, there is so, so, so much more for us to do moving forward and very much more for us to learn. So as we continue to move forward, I ask the council individually, what lessons have you learned? And what will you be doing to better and serve our city? Thank you all for giving me this time.
All right, thank you. No applause, please, please. This is not, all right, so there being no further business to come before council, if there's no objection. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. I don't know.